Hey. The Board of, for the Library Board of Trustees, City of Palm Springs, uh, the library, and we have a roll call.
Sure. Craig Borba?
Present.
David Kelly?
I'm here.
Ed McBride?
Present.
Kathy Warmick?
Present.
Do we have any changes or additions to the agenda at this time? Are there any public comments in the last couple of minutes?
There are no public comments.
Can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Second?
I'd like to actually, uh, actually pull the minutes off of the consent agenda.
Great. So, we're pulling the minutes off of the agenda, so we're talking about the consent and includes library statistics. Can you, I get a motion to accept these as, well, except, I'm sorry, accept the consent agenda. I'll do it right here in a minute.
You'll move?
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 As long as those library statistics were the ones that were just emailed to us, right?
Right.
So, they're not part of the public record quite yet.
Um, Ed, I will, um, Ed, this is Jeannie. I will, um, I will include the, the March statistics that, that were not included in your packet in the next meeting's, uh, packet for official acceptance of those. Um, I guess we need to do a roll call for the accept, for the acceptance. So, um, Ed McBride?
Yes.
Craig Borba?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Kathy Warmick?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved.
David, do you have something about the minutes?
Yeah. So, if you, everybody can pull to the minutes for a moment. Um, uh, I guess it's just two things. Uh, one in, uh, page two, section seven, um, I'd like to actually, uh, remove a sentence in here and replace it. So, I think it's the second to last sentence that says, starts with the library board members are open to forgiving the loan. Uh, I'd like to replace that with the foundation asked the library board to forgive the loan and agree to provide a more detailed budget and a plan before seeking approval. And my second comment, uh, which is kind of funny in a way, actually, uh, I just happened to notice that, um, a few of us probably have advanced degrees other than Dr. Borba, um, although I think it was like the last meeting's agenda in March where we found out his, uh, his, uh, degree. So, I don't know if that's a change. I don't think that anybody's put advanced degrees on here before. Um, but, uh, you know, if we're going to tout that, I'll, I'll put mine up there, too.
And what are you talking about specifically, David? I'm sorry.
So, in the listing of who the trustees are on page one, we've typically not had honorifics or whatever for the, the people who are on the trustees, and it just happened to be that, um, I believe this is your doctorate in education, right?
That's correct.
So, uh, I have an MBA, I have a JD. I don't usually put those things on there, but if we're starting to put people's degrees up there, then...
I'm terribly sorry, but I, I don't see, can you tell me what number you're talking about?
Page one of the agenda.
Of the agenda, of today's agenda.
Really? Oh, I'm sorry. We were talking about minutes, weren't we?
They're all right.
I think they're all kind of off together here, so...
Okay. So, can we talk about minutes first?
Yeah. So, that was my only comment on, was on the minutes, was just to, actually, if we could replace that sentence with the foundation asked the library board to forgive the loan and agree to provide a more detailed budget and a plan before seeking approval. Um, I think that's a more accurate rendition of what actually was said there. Especially when, and if I could give a little more context to that, too, is, you know, we've made a, a change to our minutes here to reflect what the board is voting on and what we're not voting on, and that sentence kind of, as it was posted here, is, uh, sounds like a, a half-pregnant vote.
I would move the agenda with your change.
I second.
Roll call.
Oh, just for clarification, Kathy, we're, you're asking that we move, that we changed the minutes per my change, and then we'll talk about the agenda with the honorifics on it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Craig Borba?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Ed McBride?
Yes.
Kathy Warmick?
Yes.
The minutes are approved.
Now, in terms of the agenda, to be honest, it's the first time I've ever noticed it, though maybe we've done this before or not. Jeannie, any, any idea if we've included degrees or any limitations on the agenda before?
I don't know if we have before, but Dr. Borba requested the information added to his title and his, um, nameplate, so we included it.
And if there's a concern, we can take that off.
No, sir. I'm not, I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying that, you know, if, if others want to request it and David's requested, that's, I mean, maybe, I mean, what about you, Kathy? Do you want to include any of yours?
I don't usually include them. I have a Juris Doctor and a Master's Degree.
Yeah. Okay. So, going forward, we'll, um, add David. Okay. Have a motion that we'll, we'll do that from someone, please.
Uh, I move that we amend the trustees', uh, listing on the agenda so that MBA and JD can follow David Kelly's name.
Second?
Second.
All in favor. Roll call, please. Jeannie?
Sure. Craig Borba?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Ed McBride?
Yes.
Kathy Warmick?
Yes.
That is approved.
All right. Number, item number five A, report from the Friends of the Palm Springs Library. Are you dialing them to make their report?
Yes. Just bear with me for a moment.
Uh, while we're in a little lull here, I was thinking that on the statistics, it would be nice to see the information regarding the passports. I'm not sure if that's going to be an issue to be added on to that listing.
Yes, it's our, it's our plan to include the passport statistics. We, um, are just, we're capturing that information, and then we will start the fiscal year fresh with, with the proper data to collect the 12 months' worth of information. So, okay, I'm dialing the Friends. One moment.
Okay. Hi.
Hi, Nancy. This is Jeannie. Um, you are on live with the, with the Library Board of Trustees, and we are live on YouTube, and if you have your volume up on YouTube, please mute that, and we're ready for your report.
Okay, great. Hi, everybody. Uh, I don't really have a lot to report. For the first time, we did not have a meeting in the month of April. Uh, we did have a meeting in March, and then it was like two days later when the shelter in place took effect. However, we did have, um, a few things that we put in place, um, but they may not really, uh, well, we did approve to do, um, the Kennedy, is that how you say, Jeannie Kennedy, um, with, uh, streaming.
Yes.
We did approve some money to do for that. Uh, we also were looking at new, uh, outside canopies, but at the moment, we don't really have a need for them. Uh, we did have to cancel. We were all, we spent a lot of our meeting talking about our annual meeting, which was going to be held on May 3rd at Smoke Tree, uh, at Disney Hall, and unfortunately, we did have to cancel that, obviously. Uh, our Modernism Week was a huge success, and, um, let's see, what else did we have going on? Uh, we're making plans for, well, we were making plans for the graduation ceremony for the Carrer High School, uh, to be held in either late May or early June, but again, that's another thing that will have to be, um, postponed. Uh, the good news is also, though, that, uh, the passports were in process, and in, uh, February, they had 38 appointments and 27 photos, and the Friends made $405. That goes into our, uh, book sale queue. Um, we are, uh, we did approve to spend whatever money they needed to on the passports for when they get back open, because this is a good source of, uh, money. And let's see, what else? Um, we had good book sales, uh, on the month of February. We sold off the shelves $2,309. So, that basically is like 2,300 books, because most of them sell for dollars apiece. Uh, so, we're very happy with that. Uh, we are going to have a sandwich board made for book sales, and, um, we're up to about 400 members now, and basically, that was, um, about it. Most of the things that we did spend our time discussing, uh, have been canceled. So, we are going to have a meeting next Tuesday, would be our normal meeting, and we'll be doing it by, uh, conference call. Do you all have any questions for me?
Nancy, this is Ed. Can you hear me?
Hold on just a moment. Let's see if we can, I don't know, Nancy, if you can hear them. Uh...
I couldn't hear clearly what he said.
Okay. Ed, I can relay for you.
Is she listening to our meeting for the next part of the discussion items? Will she, can she hear what we're talking about?
Uh, Nancy, are you going to be listening in on the, um, on YouTube?
Uh, I can.
Okay.
I didn't want to put it on ahead of time, because I didn't want to, the background noise to be interfering, but I absolutely can go into YouTube.
Okay.
Yeah, would you ask her to do so, because there could be some things that I'd like to have some feedback from her, either on email or, uh, as a follow-up?
Okay, so, Ed?
Okay, sure.
You heard, okay.
I heard that.
Okay, good.
And I have a question, too.
Has a question, too?
Pardon me?
Hi, Nancy. It's David.
Hi, David.
Um, you just mentioned that in February, the, uh, book sales were $2,309.25. Is that correct?
Well, no 25 cents, but 2309, yes.
And then, did you actually have book sales in March, and were they 2,331?
Uh, I don't know. We haven't, uh, I'll get the March numbers, uh, at our, because we didn't have an April meeting, I don't have the March numbers.
Oh, you know what it is? Uh, actually, no, you know what? I'm looking at the month before, so I think that that was probably the figure for January.
Right.
It, it would make, it would make more sense that, you know, because March was just a shorter month.
Yeah, they were pretty close in, in, um, totals, Nancy said.
Right, right. Okay. Uh, that was my only question. Thanks, Nancy. Uh, but, oh, other than, um, you are going to go to Zoom to do meetings in the future, or are you just kind of keeping your fingers crossed that we're all going to be able to meet, maybe need to meet together next month?
We're not going to go to Zoom, because I think the, uh, over 40 minutes, you have to pay for it, and right now, we don't really want to incur any more expenses, so we're just going to do a conference call.
Okay.
And we don't really, um, you know, we don't really have any PowerPoints or anything. We just have different things to discuss, so I don't really think we need Zoom at this point, and hopefully, uh, within a couple of months, because we just have May and June, and then we're, uh, dark in July and August anyway, so hopefully by February, or, excuse me, by September, we'll be back to doing regular meetings.
Well, if you want help doing Zoom, you know, the, uh, the Fossil Book Club has been meeting on Zoom, and they seem to be pretty good about logging in and doing things. So, if you want some help with that, just give me a holler.
Yeah. Um, I have Zoom for other things. I just wasn't going to do it for this meeting, but thank you.
And Kathy?
We have a question from Kathy.
Yeah, I just wanted to understand about the passports, because I thought the staff was handling passports, and I'm a bit confused to hear that the Friends are handling them. Well, we're not handling them, but we pay for all the supplies and the equipment.
And I'll jump in, too. Um, the Friends of the Library are sponsoring the photo-taking process, and they're receiving the, the proceeds from the photos. So, thereby, they bought, they bought the, the camera and the, all the printing materials for that, so, so that's what she's referring to, is the, the photo section of that, which you don't have to be a, you don't have to be a licensed passport agent to take photos, so, so that's a, a nice, um, benefit for the Friends.
Any other questions for Nancy? Thank you, Nancy.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Nancy. I'm going to disconnect now.
Sure.
Okay, now, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ed, Ed.
Uh, we're ready for the, uh, foundation call.
Call David.
Hi, Jeannie.
Hi, David. You are on live with the Library Board of Trustees, and you're live on YouTube, and, um, we've got the conference phone, microphone on, and the board is here, so they're ready for your report.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Um, I don't have much to say, like, Nancy, we were, we had, we were going, obviously going to have our meetings, and we have not met since my presentation to the Founda, or to the Board of Trustees due to the COVID-19 shelter-in-place orders. Um, we have kind of been eagerly watching the city's declaration of a fiscal emergency and, um, its impact on the library and the library's programming, and we stand ready to help the library in any way we can. We are going to have a meeting in May via Zoom, and, um, we will be able to respond to the requests from the, the trustees' meeting and assist the library in any way we can.
Uh, David, can you hear us?
David, can you hear Ed?
Kind of.
Okay. Go ahead, Ed.
I guess the same question for him. Is he watching or listening to the next session on discussion so that, um, he can be a part of the conversation for 7B, or at least respond afterwards?
Yes.
Okay, good. Ed, your, your phone is kind of choppy on that one, but, David Sidley, you heard that?
Yes, and my answer is yes.
Okay.
Do we have any questions with David? Thank you, David.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to disconnect now. Thank you.
Yep, bye.
So, Jeannie, I send your mind to report the library staff.
Before we get there, I had one question on the statistics that were going to come with next month's packet. I think it would be good if the statistics got broken down between work that was done post the, uh, shelter at place, shelter-in-place order and the pre, pre-order, because the statistics, as I looked at them, the ones that were just sent out, didn't indicate anything that was done after the order, and I know you've been busy, but it would be, I think that would be the most illuminating to get a sense of what you've been working on and what kind of requests you had after the shelter-in-place order.
Sure. Kathy, that's a great idea. Um, we already, um, calculated one number, which was the library card registration number. Um, in March, we issued 477 library cards. Uh, 307 of the, 307 was, uh, after, after? Yeah, after the closing. So, uh, after the library closed, we issued 307 new library cards in the month of March. And total, since we've closed, we've issued over 500, uh, virtual library cards. So, uh, Ed, I was wondering, I have a, um, so Kathy, I, I think that's a great idea to do a, a pre and post, because some of the information we may not be able to do, but, um, some of it we probably can, because we can specify date searches on those, and we can say everything March 1st through March 12th, and we can probably get some of the information, and, um, and door count, of course. With, with door counts, that's what it is, because after that, nobody came. So, uh, Ed, I was wondering, I have a full report that's, uh, really tied to 7A, so I, if you have, do you want me to wait, or do you want me to do that now? Okay.
It's coming up, so why don't you just wait? That makes sense.
Okay.
Okay. So, let's move to the treasurer's report, David.
In your packet, uh, you've got several pages of financials. On the bottom right-hand corner, you can see pages nine, page 10, page 11, so just to give you some reference, because I'm going to skip across a couple of pages here. So, um, if you start at page nine, um, and then compare it, uh, to page 15, uh, what you'll see are two different months here, and the way I know that is by looking at the accounting period, which is in the top left-hand corner, which says, for, uh, the one on page nine, it says 820, and for the one on page 15, it says 920. So, uh, you can see that in the more recent one, which is page 15, the 920, our cash balance is $1,936,815.92. Now, I just, one of the reasons why I was asking, uh, about the, um, books at the Friends of the Palm Springs Library, the book sales, was because, uh, it seems to me, uh, if you go to pages 11, for example, or to page 17, where it says expenditures, and you get to the second column that's period expenditures, we have something called, uh, in the title range over to the left, Friends of the Library. And, uh, you may recall that in, uh, the discussion about the Friends, we talked about a February figure of $2,309, which happens to be this expenditure figure on page 17. And, uh, when I was asking about the $2,300 figure, that was the one that you see on page 11. So, um, if you look at it, you can see also that, uh, a little further down in the columns, we do, uh, take budget, uh, take, uh, money expenditures for things like strategic planning and wellwood patio as well out of that column. So, um, I know in a prior meeting, uh, what was raised was the idea that, uh, to, um, to get book sales, uh, what we've been doing as a library is, uh, running the receipts for the book sales through the library's ledger. But, um, I think I need, uh, an explanation maybe from Jeannie or back at City Hall as to where this money comes back to us, because unless we're getting a drip, drip, drip of expenditures for, uh, book sales from the Friends of the Library, it seems as if it's being taken out of our library trust. So, um, that's something that, uh, we'll have to investigate. I'm not too certain, and it's a small number, um, but, uh, as I sit in this treasurer's job, I seem to find small things all the time that raise questions. So, um, but other than that, that is my treasurer's report.
Uh, this is Jeannie. I wanted to explain that the Friends of the Library account is this, uh, the City of Palm Springs uses this account, line item to pass the, the Friends' book sales that are done inside the library through to the Friends. So, the, the money, that exact amount of money that comes in goes right back out in the form of a check to the Friends of the Library, because we use the same cash register. And so, the, uh, when we record their transactions, it, it's set up on specifically charged to their account, and the, the sales are rung up, and then the, the City of Palm Springs passes the money through, um, through this conduit, this account number.
Right. So, my question is, why would it have an impact on cash, or does, does it have an impact on cash? I mean, does that money come, does that expenditure come back somewhere else as income? Because I'm, I don't see it.
The money comes in every single day that we make deposits, and then at the end of the month, we, or the beginning of the next month, we want, run a report, and the entire month's amount is withdrawn at once. So, if this, uh, if we ran this report and we haven't sent the money out to the Friends yet, it would show as cash in your account, but then the next month, that money would be out. So, that's, it is impacting your cash account, because every day, it could have a different amount based on the, the book sales at the library.
Well, like, for example, on page 15, where you see, uh, debits and credits, I would expect that there would have been a $2,300 credit, so that when the expenditure hits, it's zeroed out, because we're actually taking in the cash for the Friends, and then we're paying it out through our system.
That makes a lot of sense. It should be dealt with that way.
I've never noticed that.
Oh, um, the money that goes into the, oh, I'm being told by Lisa, because she, she handles the money, too, that, that the money, when the money is received, it goes into a different account, and then it's, your account is a pass-through account. So, it doesn't, um, may, I'm, maybe I made a mistake when I said that it comes in every day, and your cash would be affected daily. It's, it actually goes into a different fund. Um, and then the money is transferred from that fund into this, and then transferred out to the Friends.
But shouldn't it show as a credit every month, and then a debit at the same time? Or Friends account? I mean, it, shouldn't it be reported in a way that's clear?
Yeah, we should have equal credit and expenditure.
It's possible that it, it's not part of your cash account. We, we don't know. Um...
Well, something to look into.
But the money, um, yeah, the money is not, um, nothing is affecting you negatively in this way. The money, uh, the Friends' monies are received, and the equal, exact equal amount is going out each month. So, uh, but, uh, we, Lisa said she, we don't think it actually goes into this cash account. It goes in, it actually goes into the city's, um, amount. Uh, there's another account number that it goes into, right?
Well, we're not budgeting for it, right? So, why would it be in our expenditures for the trust?
It's just acting as a pass-through conduit for the Friends.
Well, can it pass through somewhere else other than the trust?
I don't, I, I don't know that that could have, I don't know, honestly. The city would have to create a, entirely separate account for them, but because it's part of the library, this is, and this is a horrible answer, but this is the way it's always been done.
Well, that, I mean, that's why, that's why some of us are here, to kind of take a look at it and say, well, maybe it should be done a little differently. I don't know. I mean, you know, like I said before, you know, $2,300, it's been a lot in the scheme of things, but I don't think we make that much, uh, in a month on interest on this money either, so, um, you know, it, it really does impact the trust.
Or if it's going to be done this way, why isn't it showing, coming in and then going out?
Right.
I think it's because, um, it goes, it, it doesn't go into your account at all. It goes into another, um, revenue account.
Jeannie, it seems to me that what should be done is, it should be looked at. Maybe David should have a con, a call with you or a call with the city financial person, that we have, we have reporting that either shows it coming in and going out, or it's handled outside of our trust. And, uh... And, and I think that's, I'd want to make a motion that we accept the treasurer's report and that we ask that that be done and there be a report back next month as to how it's going to be handled.
Do you want to have a second on that?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
One moment. Craig Borba?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Ed McBride?
Yes.
Kathy Warmick?
Yes.
It is approved.
Thanks for pointing that out, David. I did not see that earlier.
We've got it for years and never really met this far.
These government reports on the finances are like Egyptian hieroglyphics sometimes.
And it could be something as simple as it's on the report, but they're not printing it out too.
Right, right.
It shows somewhere they're just not printing it out for us and showing it.
Okay. Thank you.
So as we all know, the city is grappling with the current situation with the impact of the COVID-19 and especially the finances and the fiscal urgency and discussion. Jeannie called last week and I've asked her to prepare a report for us and that's why I'm hoping that both Nancy and David can hear us because I'm of the opinion that we need to, and having lived through these kinds of situations professionally in my life, you know, you libraries are unique in the fact that we have these organizations that are here to help us and we are lucky that we actually have resources as a body. And I think that it's, we should listen to the current situation, what's been going on and be prepared to talk about how in 7B, we can support this program to make sure that it doesn't have a type of damage that is irreparable. So I'm going to ask Jeannie to talk to us a little bit about what's going on, what is in the near future, and if she has any idea about the long-term effect of this. So Jeannie, why don't you take it from here?
Okay, thank you. So the state of the library is that the library is currently closed. We've closed both the main library at Sunrise and the Wellwood Murray Memorial Library as of March 13th. We have 19 full and part-time employees at the main library. So when we first started with the closures, we worked on a skeleton crew format where some staff went on telecommute schedules fairly early in the process. Most people worked one to two days a week at the library and did the rest of their work at home. Two employees have been reassigned to work at the city clerk's office. Our employees that were doing telework did webinars, training webinars, FEMA training, the human resources anti-harassment training. And then some employees also created digital content for our YouTube channel. Their instructional videos on downloading music, how to use our ebook service and how to down, and how to access our streaming services. We have loaded virtual storytimes with our children's librarian, Nancy Valdevia, myself, and Drag Queen Story Hour performer Bella DeBalle, which you can see now on our YouTube channel. I'll talk more about that. We also have been working with, for those storytimes, we've been working within publisher guidelines on public performance rights of those stories and we've selected books for virtual storytime and have been posting those according to their rules and restrictions. We also have something real special at Palm Springs Library. It's the Prickly Pears Oral History and we have 54 videos of interviews that were conducted in 1986 and 1987 by the library staff and volunteers and the library owns all the copyrights for these videos. They include Palm Springs pioneer families and some well-known residents, former mayor Frank Bogart, architects E. Stuart Williams, Albert Frye, John Porter Clark, Harold Hicks, Frances Crocker, Culver Nichols, Rosine Supple, the Licken Children, and more. To find our YouTube channel, search Palm Springs Public Library on YouTube. During the closure, we've been issuing virtual library cards and we've issued over 500 cards. We will have the April statistics for you next month, but we know that ebook usage has gone up 75%. We have also partnered with Palm Springs Unified School District to offer their middle school and high school students access to all, to our ebook collection through their student platform called Sora. And as you all know, with the city's financial crisis, our operating budgets for this fiscal year have been frozen. We have been asked to make significant cuts to next year's budget as well and budget decisions will be made by city council. As of April 30th, the majority of the library employees have been deemed non-essential and put on two weeks of COVID leave. These employees are still employed with the city, they still have their full benefits, and they still accrue leave. After two weeks, employees can choose to use personal leave or apply for unemployment. There are four of us at the library who were deemed essential and are still working to cover the library basics while the building is closed. We're answering the phones Monday through Friday, receiving deliveries, issuing virtual library cards, feeding the fish, and assisting customers on the telephone with technology needs like getting ebooks. We are also working on creating a virtual summer reading program with the full financial support of the Friends of the Library. They really stepped up on this one. Our plan is to have an online registration program, provide two to three free books just for registering, and then reward children with a pack of five new paperback books when they reach their reading goal. In lieu of in-person programs, we will have online activities for them to choose from. Depending on our level of service in June, families can pick up their registration kits and then return when they complete the program. So we have been working to develop reopening plans with various scenarios depending on the orders by the state, county, and city of Palm Springs. We've been participating in virtual meetings with other library directors throughout the state of California and other library employees across the state to develop guidelines that can be recommended throughout the state for all public libraries. We have prepared our own stages of reopening plans and are ready to serve our community at whatever level our city deems allowable. The safety of our community is the most important factor. When the library was fully operational, as you all know, we saw so many people in person on a regular basis. We have to take precautions to protect the community and our staff. So like I've said, we've been developing various scenarios to handle a phased reopening, whether that is a pickup-only model or a limited number of people allowed in the building, all the way up to the unlimited numbers of people in the building. We are also working to develop a COVID code of conduct, both for staff and the public. I know other libraries in our region are working on things like this too. So we're all leaning on each other in our library consortiums to, to help come up with the best plans possible. Now, some of the things that we have been doing also is we have been quarantining our library returns. So we have the book, the book machine, you know, the book return machine turned off, but our, our manual book slot is available and we have those items sitting for 72 hours before we handle them. We change the bin daily and make a note of the date so that we can bring those items out of quarantine. We've extended all due dates for items so that no one has any overdue materials. There's no need to bring items back at this time because we're closed. You can keep those items and enjoy them until we open. But for people who might have to leave town, we, right when we first closed, we had a lot of snowbirds having to leave town. So we quarantined the items to make sure that we're all safe and not spreading disease. Some of our ideas have included plans for an employment center or cooling center. And as, as you know, our digital library is open 24/7 so that we could stay connected with users. Anyone with an existing library card plus virtual cards have access to a host of our products. We have Overdriver Libby for ebooks or downloadable audiobooks. Canopy with a K, that's our TV streaming service. Those are for movies. We have the New York Times Online. RB Digital is for our e-magazines. Freego is for downloadable music. We have other programs like Mango Language Learning, Job Now to help with job searching and job prep, Help Now for homework help, and so many more. Now, as far as our YouTube channel, we, we've had the channel up and been loading, loading items for a little bit, but we made a major announcement about it on April 27th. We've got 24 subscribers and 274 views. Our top six videos are Cut the Cord, The Basics of Streaming in the Time of Quarantine, How to Download and Use Libby eBook Reader App, Drag Queen Story Hour with Bella DeBalle Reading My Princess Boy, Prickly Pears, Volume 12, which is Albert Frye and John Porter Clark together in an interesting interview. Number five is tied with How to Use Freego and Read to Me with Miss Nancy in Spanish. So we've also got some really cute Facebook posts from parents posting their children enjoying the storytime and thanking us. We got a letter saying thank you about the YouTube channel and we're just working really hard to try to, try to stay connected with our community as best we can. So that is my report. Thank you for listening.
Does anyone have any questions for Jeannie?
My questions would really be what, how does she think about the phases of reopening? And especially because the governor may be taking us into phase two as early as Friday, where does she think that puts the library and what change, what different steps would they be taking if we entered phase two? And I don't know if anybody has been looking at Lisa Middleton's posts, but our city has been going down in the numbers of COVID people for four straight weeks. We hit a peak in the second week and we've basically been descending back down. So we're in, we're in better shape in Palm Springs and phase two might, might mean something in terms of what the library can do. So have you been looking at that?
Thank you, Kathy. That's excellent, excellent question and we definitely have been thinking ahead because of course, we know that at some point, we will reopen and we've been working really hard to think about what our first action might be and we weren't sure if our first action might happen to become a cooling center only because, you know, it's, it's really hot out there right now and we don't know, we're waiting for, for guidance and, on that. But for, if we are included in phase two and the city gives the green light for parks, parks to open and possibly for like, for curbside pickup to happen, our plan would be, we, everybody knows it's called curbside pickup, but we wouldn't really be interacting with people's vehicles. So our plan would be that we would offer a pickup service where people could place holds for items either on our website or via telephone and we would then retrieve the items for them, gather them up, and let the customers know that the items are ready. And then when they come to the library, they would call a number from their car and then we would prepare the, I'd check out the items to them, put it on a table outside the door and retreat inside so that it would be contactless. But yeah, so we're, we're, that's our, that's our plan and we've been, been checking to make sure that we're not leaving out any steps and that it's safe and clean and, and that, and it's still that the books that are being returned are still in quarantine and not, they're, they're not available for other customers to instantly request. Another thing that we were thinking that we're probably going to do is switch our hot-off-the-press collection to requestable because that's a huge collection and those are the books that when you walk in the library, you just, it's like a lucky day collection and you just pick something that's available. But for this scenario, people can't just walk in and browse. So we would consider, we would convert those to requestable materials and then fill customers' holds.
And Jeannie, I'm assuming that you can do all of this with the existing four people that you have?
No, we would have to request some more staff to come back and be activated again because it would be impossible for us to do that. I think depending on the demand, we could probably do it with four more people. And another idea on the plan, and it all depends on the city's guidance too. The city may say, this is too much, too many days, but we would think that we, our plan would be that we could be open, open for this service Monday through Friday, but only have pickups available in the afternoon so that we would have the mornings to, to fill the holds and go get the items and, and prepare. Did that answer your question?
Yeah. So your plan then, as you go through the phases, includes the ability to determine how you'll bring the people back that are no longer there, right? Get what you're saying?
Absolutely, yes. This, all the different stages require different levels of staffing and, and, and this is a temporary situation that we're in and so it's not, you know, that's why it would be, we would have to have staffing to, to handle some of these different stages. And if we just do a pickup-only service at this time, I don't know that we would have Wellwood, there would be nothing for them to pick up at the Wellwood facility. And one of the options that we were proposing would be that that might become an employment center or a cooling center or something because that's one of the biggest demands that we're getting right now is for people who need access to computers or to printers. And they're really struggling to apply for unemployment benefits with just telephones. As an example, one of my neighbors does not have a computer at her house. She uses the library and just, and got laid off. So what does she do? But she's really stuck. And so that's something that we, we're very aware of, of what our community needs and so we're, but again, you know, safety first and we want, we want to make sure everybody is, is safe and, and that we're not transmitting disease.
So what instructions have you given by the city that the program, your staff are gone for now, so as you reopen in these stages, it is your understanding that your request will be, we would like to do this in this next phase, it requires this many people. Is it a given that those people will come back or do you have to receive permission or how, how is that going to work?
Yes, we would have to have the guidance of our city to do this and, and coordination with our human resources department. So definitely, it's, it's a coordinated effort.
And does it require any special, you're just getting approval from the city manager? Is that how that works?
I think that it would require some city council direction on this because, because they're, they're, they're the ones who are putting the rules in place for the entire city. So I think that they would have to give the direction on what level city services reopen. I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure at what level who, who makes the decisions on those, but I'm pretty sure that it's the city council.
No, I think one of the reasons why it's important to, to figure this part out too is because one of the, one of our functions here, we have a standing committee that's on advocacy. And I think at some point, we're going to have to active, activate that committee and so, and be prepared for being able to explain why we need certain things to the city council. So as prepared as it sounds like you are at this point for whatever the county, the state is going to give you probably this Friday, you, I think the other part of the equation is figuring out what we need to do in terms of advocating for whatever it is that you're planning on doing. So the clearer you are about what you'd like this library to do in the next couple of months, I think the clearer it would be for us to be able to make some plans about how we're going to approach advocacy.
As a matter of fact, what I, what I've had in mind, in that very, in that same direction, is that forming some sort of a task force made up of the trustees, the foundation, and the Friends to work with Jeannie on advocacy, is there funding that she might need? How, how can we as the support groups for the library be in sync with her and to be there to help her? Because I think now's the time, just to use this term, circle the wagons around her and if it requires... And if it requires us to go to city council or if city council says, sorry, there's no money for this, then we have a way to discuss is there funding among these organizations? Do we need to go out and raise money? I mean, what, what, what are some of the options that we might be thinking ahead of what could happen over the coming months? I, I mean, city council doesn't meet every week, every day. So I mean, a request to go into them could be, as we know, a couple of weeks in the making before they would get to them. So I, I, I don't know, Jeannie. Or I'm sorry, Kathy, you have something?
Phase Two is retail, in the state. And I think that does mean curbsides. So I think a proposal on that makes sense. I think a proposal to declare some, some members of the library staff as essential for, from the point of benefits and applying for unemployment, for looking for jobs and trying to figure out a way to open up Wellwood for those purposes also makes sense as an essential service. And those are proposals that I think should go forward. My, my guess from talking to city consellers is they've not had, they may have had some informal discussions in closed session, but they've done nothing reportable. So I would assume that the decisions to date regarding staffing came from declaring a fiscal emergency and giving David our Dr. Ready powers. So that proposals probably go to Dr. Ready before they go to city council. And looking at those two issues, I think those two issues, the library I think is an essential service in the city. And if we can open up some portions of it, it would serve the city well to do that. So those would be, I think, the kinds of advocacy that we might want to start to do. And I think that's really all I can say is I think there's room on both of those. I think what Jeannie's been doing has been terrific and there clearly is an interest in the library. I know that City Councilor Garner was doing the story hours every day before the library picked it up. So that there's been an interest on the city councilor's part in continuing some of these kinds of functions. That's really all, you know, those, those would be two things that I think we might want to work with Jeannie on or advocate for. And also to figure out how, how, you know, I, the library as a cooling center is not an exciting idea to me because it, it initiates the role of the library as a cultural institution in the city. I think there are other places that could be cooling centers rather than the library. So.
I have one other comment, which, which was to say that, you know, when, when there are perceived needs in the city, I don't think it's, it's, for example, helping people get employment, there should be ways that the library could actually do that or suggest ways to city council to affect that using our resources. And if our space, Wellwood or the main library cannot be utilized safely to access computers, I think those computers need to get out of that, those locations and move somewhere else so that the city can use them. And maybe that's not the point now because so much of the city is still closed down and there's no one that's going to be hired for anything in the city at this point. But, you know, I think we should be thinking proactively in terms of, we're actually in a really bad situation in the city and in emergency measures, we kind of like look at whatever's available and putting it out there. So to have the, the computers sit in the libraries when there's people who need them, it's pretty tragic.
Any other thoughts or comments? No. So Jeannie, what do you, talk to us about how we can help? And, and remember you've got the foundation, you've got the friends listening. What can we do to support? Clearly we can reach out to city council members, we can do what we do and advocate for you. But, you know, are you interested in, in having some discussions with us that we can take out to the community? We can get these organizations started to help advocate on whatever. I mean, you tell me, what do you think? You've heard some comments here. Can you give us some feedback and tell us what you think we need to do?
Sure, thank you. Thank you for the feedback too. I think the, the thing that I've learned from this experience is that you do better when you work together and work, we've been doing a lot of meetings with library directors and, and other, like I said, other groups in the state that are in the same situation as us. And just hearing different ideas from different people, it, it brings on this, you know, oh, that's a great idea. Oh, I didn't think of that. Someone said, well, let's remove all the chairs. Then they don't have a place to sit. They can grab and go. That's an option. So I think when you, when you talked about, you just mentioned a little bit about talking about representatives from different groups. I think having, maybe developing a team of, of people who can come up with advocacy methods or, or ways to get the word out, it's a, it's a great idea of, of something for us to do to talk to each other because we're, we are a little isolated in our, in our closed down library and the, the, the more help we can get, the better. And, and of course, you know, we're not, we're not wanting to rush to do anything ridiculous. You know, we're, we're not saying, open us up and let's do this and let's let the people in. Of course not. We're trying to, we're trying to be prepared for when, when, when there is the safe guidance from the, the state and the county and the city to say, it's okay. We want to be ready and we want to do it right. And we want to do it in a way that doesn't create anger or, or trouble. You know, I don't want to, I don't want to have a big line of people at the door. I want to do it in a way that it's safe and, and maybe we can do some things like, when it gets to that stage, we have our passport reservation system. Maybe we can modify, I mean, I know we can modify it, but maybe we can change that. Reserve the library, make an appointment so that you know what time and day you're supposed to come so that everybody doesn't show up all at once. So I think, Ed, you mentioned something about a little, like a committee of representatives or something that might be a really great thing to do.
Well, I think that the, I might, I mean, to Kathy and even David's comments, I think that if we can make sure the library becomes truly essential in our community, we all know that, but we, I think we've got to prove that and show that we're essential. And maybe there is other capacity and ideas we haven't thought of. So I, I think that, and by the way, I, as a former public servant, I don't, I don't want us to take the place of life, of city funding. I mean, I'm not advocating that or, or saying that four people do the job of 20. I think that we come together and, and it's interesting that you talk about meeting with other library directors. I would imagine that this, these conversations, it doesn't matter if you're in Los Angeles or you're in Palm Springs or you're in San Francisco, we're all in the same situation, right? And so I think it's, we can learn from one another and be ready to respond when the community needs us to respond and clearly be, be essential. So I mean, I was thinking, if, if this is okay with the trustees, that the budget committee, which by the way includes the advocacy committee, just so happens a member of the advocacy is on the budget committee, and that we ask Nancy and we ask David and ask them to, ask someone from their boards to join them. And the six of us, nothing else, it's just happened, it's a flirty conversation with Jeannie and talk about are there things that we can start working on now? And it may be nothing, but I think it's worth a conversation. Are there any other suggestions or comments to that or?
I think it's a good idea.
So it reminds you, the, the budget committee is David and myself and David is the advocacy committee. So we, we can go two birds with one stone by having the two of us, you know, represent. And then if we, if, if it means something from the building perspective, then one of you could step in and one of us could step off so that we don't have a quorum. You have to be careful now that there's only four of us that can get so many people.
The building portion of it, well, I don't think it'll come in right now. I think that given the city cri, the magnitude of the city crisis, I don't think we're, I think what we were working on our last meeting isn't on the table right now.
Yeah. Very sad to say, but I agree with you.
So it, I don't think it's the bill, I don't think the building committee fits into this. I think it's advocacy and thinking through, making sure that the library stays an essential city institution and, and has, and continues to have a role as we go through the, the opening up phases which are starting now.
Oh, and this is Jeannie. Ed, I just wanted to jump in and say that, you know, when you talk about how essential the library is, it, it's really warms my heart, I guess. It's, it's sad that people don't have access to the library, but it warms my heart when they call us and they talk about, oh, we, we love the library, we can't wait to get back, when are you opening? And then they, we teach someone how to use eBooks and get those. And like I said, the 75% increase in that. And then I, based on our statistics, people are still continuing to use our Wi-Fi service. So we still have our Wi-Fi turned on. It's reachable through the parking lot. The parking lot is closed off, but there, people have been using what services are available. And so that, that makes me feel good that, that they, that they have that ability. And we're very fortunate that we have such great digital resources. And so it just tells me how essential we are when we're not avail, you know, when we're not available. So thank you.
Well, the time is coming pretty soon where all the people that lost their jobs may have a job to go back to, they may not. And another place that we can help them, develop those skills and be prepared. So the resources are aplenty. So I'll reach out to Nancy, if you're listening, and to David, and I'll of course include you, David. And I'll write to Jeannie asking that we schedule some sort of a Zoom meeting. By the way, I have a Zoom subscription we can use for any of these things. And let's, let's just schedule a call and, and just talk about it and find out if there is something here that we can work on and help you. And maybe Jeannie, you can, I mean, my questions are, if we come up with a great idea and it requires either city resources or maybe we have to find our own resources, how is that going to work? Those kinds of questions, you know, if you can think ahead and leave me some of your ideas. Fair enough? You there?
Yes, that sounds great. I just got a, a text. Nancy Morrison says, sounds good. She texted me.
Fred, are there people in the schools that should join in this to support the library?
I'm thinking that maybe Mike Sweets, who's in charge of curriculum, and he would also know who does the accessibility for students. But Jeannie, haven't you really made that connection with them?
I have.
Oh, and you have?
I was on the building committee with Kathy and I, and she's, she's great.
Yeah. So that would be the, the contact person and they're on a shortened schedule, but they're still available to meet with people.
I, I, I just think widening it a little bit because the schools use the library would be a really good idea.
Yeah, that's, that's great. And we have Mike Sweets, Sweets's contact information. And then I just got a text from David Sidley and he said it sounds good to him too.
Yeah, I could, I'll include Mike in it and see what he says. It's a great idea. Thank you, Craig.
Okay.
Okay. Um, our agenda, any, our next item, sorry. Um, let's see, we have 7C, 7C, yes. Trustee Kelly, what is the memo? You want to talk about that, David?
So did we get to 7B? What was the friends, trust, that was all from before, right? So we're done.
All right. Yeah, that was me asking this committee to come together. So that was my, what I, I'm sorry, you are, I didn't mean to tip over that. But that's, 7B would be me mailing everyone and asking if they'd like to participate in this task force or committee to meet with Jeannie and find out what we can do as a, as a community organization.
And the only thing with 7B is that if, if they're interested, also broadening it to invite two people from the schools.
I'm gonna, I'll, I'll include Mike. I'll, I'll email Mike as well, so.
Right. I meant for actions that we're taking.
Yeah, absolutely. I've got it in my notes here. Thank you.
Do you need a motion?
I don't know, do we need a motion?
Not on the agenda.
Ed, you can appoint a committee at any time. I don't think you need a.
Yeah.
I can appoint a committee, that's what I'll do. Okay. Trustee Kelly.
So in your packet is this memo that I wrote. I know seems everybody's read it. Go to the, the final page of it as a summary and I'll just go briefly through those points. One was now is a good time to estimate savings from curtailed operations in anticipation of budget cuts imposed by the city. Actually yesterday, Dr. Ready was on YouTube saying there were huge deficits upcoming our way, multi-millions of dollars. So this really is a, a good time to start estimating it. I don't know how it's going to be allocated and, and if I had a, a question for him, I would probably want to know whether or not any of those deficits that are going to be caused have any source of revenue perhaps from the state as the state starts to consider how they're going to help municipalities going forward. Number two is that a minimum all city projects to build or improve existing buildings like the library will replace on hold. The library may be asked to reduce its operating expenses as well. I think Kathy had just alluded to that as far as the building committee is concerned that, you know, whatever was being discussed about Sunrise Park is probably on hold for the time being. And we've already heard from Jeannie about what efforts might be taken about operating expenses. I, I wrote, and number three, in my opinion, the reopening of the library should be done in stages to ensure safety of the staff, volunteers and the public. Yes, we already discussed that as well. There's Dr. Ready, how are you doing?
Hey, sorry I was delayed, everyone.
Your ears must be burning because I just mentioned you two seconds ago about your YouTube video.
Yeah, okay.
David, we're, I don't know if you have our agenda or not, but we are actually on 7C, if you have the agenda.
Actually, I don't have it in front of me.
Maybe we could go back one second, David. We had just talked about two, as the governors began to enter into Phase Two, we were setting up a committee to see which functions of the library might be able to reopen. There were two things that were identified, possibly a pickup for books, which might entail some more staff. And the other was some use of the computers for people who are applying for unemployment or jobs and don't have access to computers. So we set up a committee to begin to look at that with the friends, the foundation, the, the trustees and possibly some people from the schools. And we were just beginning to go into discussing what might happen to the finances. We were assuming that everything that had to do with the building and rebuilding of the library was off the table for the time period for, for now.
Yeah, it would seem that way for the moment at least, yeah.
We can't hear you.
Yeah, it would seem that way for the moment, at least for the moment. Yeah, I don't know how, how else to, to approach it. Although, although I, I did, I mean, the, the proposal for the, the cooling center is very interesting. The pickup, although it's, we're not sure where the governor is going tomorrow, right? Maybe there's going to be, well, he hasn't made any indication on library, I don't think, libraries. So are we opening and only allowing, you know, ten in at a time or do we just need to? to plan on curbside pickup? Maybe that's the model we should just plan on? Is that what you're sort of recommending?
We were looking at curbside, possibility of curbside pickup, but that was more me, Jeannie was thinking about, and it was more me having watched him on Monday where he talked about retail curbside pickup.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, is it going to be that, uh, the library is going to have to adhere to retail rules, or are we going to have to? I mean, we are part of the city government, and, and so, I don't know how, you know, what the rules might be in terms of opening up City Hall or other municipal buildings. Would we have to follow those guidelines? Uh, could we make up our own guidelines because we're a hybrid of the two?
Yeah. So, so, it, it, technically, libraries could be an essential service. I mean, if we choose it to be an essential service, it is. So, it could be open, in, in my estimation, uh, although we would wanna do the appropriate protocols, right? So, social distancing and the curbside would be a logical thing. So, then it's just, do we, do we want to do the curbside? I think we, we could start there. That would probably be the best place, uh.
And I, and I was asking for a solution as to what do we do with the, all the computers that we have at Wellwood and at the main public library that, uh, people who have no access to the internet to apply for jobs, they can't use because the, the library is closed.
So, I, I think, you know, because that would be a very essential service in my estimation. So, it's, I'm almost thinking, okay, we could allow, and, and, you know, we have to think about this, is it two, three, four people in to use space computers at a time? All right, you got an hour, here you go. Uh, you know, that's probably something we really should focus on because that goes directly to people getting their benefits, I think.
Right.
And I'm almost wondering if that's not something we should do sooner than later.
I think we felt that was critical.
So, so this is where it's gonna get a little tricky. So, Monday is the special council meeting on the budget, not tomorrow, but on Monday is, is on-
Need to come closer to your mic, please.
So, Monday on the budget meeting, council's gonna be discussing, you know, a significant level of, of service reductions, uh, across the city. Because we're looking at, obviously, the twenty-eight million dollar deficit in the current fiscal year, which ends June thirtieth, and then another potentially forty-five next fiscal year over the next twelve months. So, there's nothing, no matter what we can do, there's nothing we're gonna be able to do in the current fiscal year, except with the hiring freeze and spending freeze on certain things, uh, it's gonna end up, you gotta put twenty million of your reserves on the table right now for June thirtieth, council. Going forward, the next twelve months, you wanted us to give you some recommendations on, on service reductions. Across the board, to meet that gap, you hear scenario A, scenario B, and scenario C. Each one of them is progressively more reductions. Obviously, library is, is part of that reduction. So, which way they go will determine where we are. So, for example, if they chose the first reduction, well, okay, you're gonna have, the library's gonna be open, it's gonna be probably open a day less, and it's gonna have less service. You choose the next one, it's gonna be even less than that. So, I don't know where they're gonna go with it. Or they could say, "We're not gonna touch the library at all." Uh, but aside from that discussion, because that's when we reopen, right? When, when all the facilities reopen, that's what it will look like. But until then, maybe we need to make the case that we should be having some small amount of people in to be able to use the computers to do these things, and curbside pickup for books. So, if you need a book, here's the curbside process. If you need a computer to access to computer, then you got, you name it, is it thirty minutes? And we can do four at a time. And then, do you wanna do that at Wellwood, or do you wanna do that at the main library? So, I think, if, if you wanna think in that terms, and, and obviously, you may not know right today, uh, we, I will advance that.
That brings me helpful.
I, I think that that's, that's a first start, right? Do we need to, Jeannie, you're still there, right? Do we, do you need our support in helping flesh this idea out, or do you already have it fleshed out, 'cause you were just talking? I think Jeannie's been learning from other library directors around the state that they're looking at ways to be essential as well. So, Jeannie, are, do you-
Yes, I'm here. I'm listening.
Okay.
And, um, I have the plans, and I could, um, I could share them with the trustees.
Yeah. So, so I, I think, you know, we don't know what council's gonna do a little more, longer term, but at least, let's just say, okay, we wanted to reopen, starting, I don't know, Monday or Fri- Friday, uh, with, with the curbside and then access to the computer. So, I, I suppose, Jeannie, you know, you've got a skeleton crew in there now, it'd be, you'd need to add a few, I suspect.
Yes, that's right.
If Jeannie told us probably four people, am I right, Jeannie?
Yes, for the curbside-only, uh, service, we would need four people to run it five days a week. And then, um, if we open Wellwood, we have additional, um, staffing needs for that. And it depends on how many days it's open and how many hours. But yes, we've, we've explored this, and we, we do have the, the numbers fleshed out.
And is it less expensive to open the library for the main building for computers or Wellwood?
I don't, I don't think, I don't think there's a difference. I would have to look at it for sure, but we were thinking about safety and, uh, keeping the curbside guests separate from the computer users, and maybe it's more of a controlled environment at Wellwood, uh, because it's really just computers. But that's just something we have to look at.
And it's a reservation system for the computers, right? So that anybody who's coming into Wellwood or the main library is actually going to a desk where they make a reservation on a computer, and then they get a time and an ID so that they can use the computer at a specific time, so they can go walk away, do whatever they need to do. They don't need to, you know, hang around and, and, uh, create crowding situations, correct?
Right. And we're complete, we're completely adaptable on this. Uh, we can modify our reserve, our computer reservation system, we could take reservations over the phone, we can, uh, we, we can be completely flexible when it comes to the computers and the length of time that people get and how many we open up. And we've, we've measured, and, uh, in the main library, we, we could have access to more computers because we have twenty-one computers that are sit-down and eight that are stand-up, and we've measured, and we would use ten sit-down computers and four stand-up computers. So, there are more computers available at the main library, but it just depends on what level of service we need to offer the community and the demand. So, um-
And the other thing that we probably would need is, uh, that lovely word, PTE, right? I mean, do we have enough sanitizer? Do we have, you know, do we have masks for people who don't have a mask, you know, uh, so that we can have their keyboards wiped down and, and, and not spread the germs?
Well, that, that adds another dimension. So, if, if, if the expectation is that we're gonna be able to sanitize after every user, you know, then, then, you know, maybe we gotta think twice about doing it, but you're right. I mean, I, I suppose we could certainly have, like, right, the Clorox wipes and, and a minimal amount of that, um-
Or you can require gloves, wire gloves, whenever you have, have those computers.
So, David, is your concern that the city's resources have been to buy those kinds of things, or is it the fact that we would have staff to that? Because, I mean, we, we could spend, we could ask the friends, we, we've got trust, I mean, there's, there's resources to buy those kinds of supplies that we can get our hands on.
And the, uh, I know that off top, data offered, uh, yesterday, people on Main Street, the merchants to buy, buy it on his wholesale discount, uh, those kinds of supplies.
And I, and I also have a wholesale discount as well, but, you know, we could, we could use two, so.
Well, so, so presuming you can get that, uh, the cost isn't so much, it's just, all right, so, are, is staff going to have to sanitize the stuff after every user, or are the, the wipes gonna be there and the user's gonna have to do that here, here, you know, like you go to grocery store, I'm wiping my cart, I'm wiping-
I, I don't know. I mean, this is, this would be a good question for Jeannie, 'cause Jeannie's been on the phone with a number of other libraries, I'm sure.
Uh, it would be probably standardized if we had staff do it.
Okay. So then, that's, adds a different level of complexity, uh, and you need more or less? I, I, I don't know, Jeannie. I mean, at some point, when it gets too complicated, it is what we're finding, it's just hard to enforce, hard to do.
Well, maybe you don't start with computers, you start with two.
One, um, one of the libraries in our region, Rancho Cucamonga, has been doing, um, computer tech center since day one, they never closed, and they've been doing the curbside service. And they found that the customers prefer to wipe their own computers so that they know it's clean to their standard, and so they provide the wipes for them, and, um, and, and then the customer knows it's clean. And, um, that's one of the things that they've been doing. And, and we, we have a supply of, of wipes and hand sanitizer at the library. It is difficult to find, but, uh, we, we were able to get a pretty good supply right before we closed. So, uh, we do have, uh, those things available. We don't have masks available for the public. We would, um, probably encourage and enforce whatever the city's rule is on, on face covering.
If you wanna have the, the face covering to come in the library.
Uh, yeah, we would definitely then, um, have to enforce that and encourage it.
Exactly.
Not let anyone in without one.
Correct.
We're all used to it.
Jeannie, if we just opened up one site, wouldn't that save us some of our expenses instead of having both sites open?
Right, I think it can only be one site, we gotta pick one. Yeah, I think you're right, Craig.
And that, that's, that's doable. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. It's, it's, um, it's doable, we, um, we would obviously prefer the main library for the curbside because that's where our things are, but, um, the, the computers, it, it's either one, whatever you all think is the best option and what's available for the community.
Well, there are computers at the main library, right? So, I mean, there's both resources there. So, it might make sense to try the main library first, and let's see how this goes. But, I, I mean, I, I think, Jeannie, fleshing this out and looking at all aspects of it, sharing it with us, allowing us to contact our council representatives and, and the mayor, you know, advocating that it be considered, um, next Monday. I think we've, we've got to hurry because it's, it is Wednesday, and we wanna get these things together. Is that, that, would that be okay with you, David, for us to, at least as a group, advocate our representatives, and of course, copy you on our emails and comments and ask it to be considered in the deliberations on Monday?
I don't think I have anything on my schedule that can't be moved.
And David, is it something you would, David Ready, Dr. Ready, is it something you would propose?
Yeah, I'm just trying to think, there, there, I, I, I think what I'll do is, I'll start raising the issue tomorrow. Um, we're, we're talking about the orders, uh, you know, pickleball, golf, and, and I, I think, uh, let me think through this. I, I tell you what, if, if, Jeannie, if I could, if you could summarize for me basically what that proposal would look like. So, for example, we're gonna, we're gonna call in three, four people, four people, whatever, it's gonna be these hours, the cost would be approximately this. If I could just get that general information, that would help me to get the ball rolling. Uh, where really would, I think, come together would be Monday, at that, that meeting, because council's gonna be discussing about X amount of cuts. But again, that's for once when we open, but right now, w- we need to do this stopgap, this emergency essential thing, um, and so, I'll get everyone, I'd like to get everyone on the same page to go forward with that immediately. Uh, 'cause I think the need is out there.
I agree.
No, no problem, I can do that.
Reasonably, yeah. So, for the Monday meeting, that would be the one where it would really, I, I think, come together. Because council's gonna have to be basically saying, yes, we're cutting here, but we, we're gonna go forward there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. And we're still going to form a group that will work with Jeannie going forward on, you know, how can we help as a community and as her support organizations? Um, and things that, as a result of this meeting, if there's needs that we can help, we, we feel like we need to be there behind her to, and help the community.
Yeah. It's, it's gonna be a lot of, um, a, a lot of uncharted territory here. We never had to deal with this kind of, you know, significant loss of revenue this quickly. I mean, it was interesting, in two thousand nine, ten, you know, it was drawn out over, over, you had time to react, and, but this is just all, all at once. And then the worst part is you don't know, you know, once it gets reopened, our businesses, restaurants, hotels, you know, are gonna come back really slowly, or certainly not immediately. Now, the good news is, people won't be getting on planes and traveling, but they can get in their car right and come to Palm Springs. Um, but then what does that look like? Uh, you know, how many people are you allowed into a restaurant? So, it's a lot of unknowns. So, so we're anticipating, our revenues aren't gonna be back to normal, at least for probably a year.
So, that, that begs the question, then, Dr. Ready, that what I've been thinking about, and having look at communities, and, and this one in particular, you know, it's a very generous community. I mean, Tad and I have given to so many causes, and this has happened to help people out. You know, uh, I'm a member of Rotary, I mean, Rotary is giving money away, trying to help people. I mean, it, what, and maybe this is not the time for this conversation, but I, I'm curious as to, you know, what our role could be if, if resources are really money or buying things. Is that allowed? Can we do that, you know, as the support organizations for the library?
Yeah, bring it on, and sure.
Because I think that, you know, thinking about our library foundation, we were talking about having, you know, some sort of an event to raise awareness about a new building. Well, that could easily be, we need to save our library programs or build money for future programs. You know, this community, I think, would respond to those kinds of things. So, you know, it's, that's where I think this group could brainstorm with Jeannie, and what are the things that we can do, I'm allowed to go outside the house, um, or even, maybe not even outside the house, I can't tell you how many donations I've made online to organizations. So, you know, it's, it's just bringing awareness that we, we don't want this program to suffer more than what it has to.
All right, so, so in summary, the, the goal is to get the curbside and the ability to have people come in and have access to the internet.
That's a great idea.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Our contribution to helping.
Yeah, that, that's very reasonable. I think that's an important aspect. Okay.
And we're gonna ask the friends, the foundation, and we'll invite, uh, the school district to participate in these conversations as well. So, uh, just so you know.
Okay, great. All right, th- thank you, everyone, I'm gonna run into my other, other meeting, but, Jeannie, I'll, I'll speak with you, and, and everyone, thanks for all your extra efforts in all this, and, and your patience, and, uh, I, I know, there's a lot of, what we call, in, in, in the public administration literature, emotional labor, right? And I know all, that you guys are going through it. I mean, this is, everyone's going through this now, so appreciate your extra efforts.
Well, I, I wanna say for me personally, um, thank you, because I know you've spent a lot of hours, and you've got a lot on your shoulders right now, and it's making a lot of very tough, difficult decisions, and I thank you for that, and I thank you for your service and what you're doing for our community. I think all of the people that are there, you know, all the time, trying to help us get through this, so thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, everyone, see you.
Thank you, thanks a lot.
Hi, David.
So, David, you were, you were going down your list, you-
Yeah, so, point number five. Uh, I would also like to see innovation in using online resources in library programming, Zoom, for example. Uh, Jeannie's report was great, I thought, uh, as she listed Libby, Canopy, New York Times Online, a number of those things. I think, you know, uh, as much as that, and the YouTube thing I thought was a great idea, um, keep publicizing it. I, you know, I don't know if we're sending out enough emails from the library or however else we could do it. I think we've got, uh, we've already as a body approved marketing money that probably, uh, if it's still available, uh, for use, probably should be redirected in terms of trying to, you know, to let people know what the library services are in this time of COVID crisis, um, you know, that, the, the bus stations or the banners or whatever else that's, uh, more publicly, uh, available. I think that would be great. Uh, point number six was at some point, the, the city must make arrangements for the trustees to be able to meet without violating the Brown Act. Well, here we are, so thank you very much for that. Uh, number seven, I would like to continue with the distribution of the financial report, Jeannie's been sending that, thank you very much, Jeannie. And number eight was the library foundation has a presentation due to the Board of Trustees regarding the disposition of its outstanding note, which I was hearing from Mr. Sidley, that that's coming up, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
I'm just talking away, I'm sorry, David. Thank you. I was, I, I would like to have some, have these, if not all, discussed in one of the, our first meetings when we come together as a committee, okay?
Yeah, I'm sorry?
Have these items discussed at our first committee, because there's some information in here. I think that committee can also maybe flesh out and, and find ways of proposing it and, and implementing them, so. Okay? Thank you.
Hey, the question David raised regarding the, um, marketing budget has- Hey, the question David raised regarding the marketing budget, has all of what we approved been spent? And is it possible for any of it to be redirected toward the kinds of work that Jeannie's doing right now with the library?
On your page 17 in your packet, the PR library campaign, it looks like there's $13,700 still in that account. There are still, Julie's saying there are a few invoices still outstanding, but that wasn't all. I think, and Julie helped me out with this, I think that part of that was, everything kind of stalled out when we started to go on to social distancing and restrictions and things like that. So the whole plan wasn't enacted at this point.
It just seems, it seems that the money could still be used, but be directed towards supporting the services that the library can do right now.
Great.
And if you need more money to do that, come back.
Now, with that library campaign, if you've already approved that money, so I don't, is there any special approval that you need to do at this point? Or I think it's already been approved and your comments could just direct that?
Yeah. And if we find out that we need more money, we'll bring it back. I mean, the budget committee is going to be a part of this group to begin with, we'll bring it back to this group if we need more money.
Yep.
So Kathy, you're suggesting that the remaining money be used for COVID closure issues?
I think remaining money be used for COVID program issues, to publicize to the community which services that you can get an E library card, that you can draw down books, that you can get music.
So it's still directed towards publicity?
It's still directed toward publicity.
Okay.
But the mode of publicity may change a bit to be able to use the money. I mean, there may be ads on Spanish language radio, or you may be doing something else that people can receive to do it as opposed to putting it on buses, since people may not be riding buses right now.
Idea.
Yes, and just thinking about this PR awareness campaign, those types of messages exactly fit the goal of the campaign, is to bring awareness about the services that we already offer. And so I think it fits perfectly. And Julie and I were just talking about things that we might, you know, some of the money got, the projects got canceled because the downtown banner project, we got, our project got canceled, and we did some changes to things like that. Oh, Julie was saying, we could do web banners and radio ads because a lot of people might be accessing those resources, rather than, like you said, rather than the bus banners and things like that. Because people are.
Yeah, actually, I was just going to say that the friends at the Palm Springs Library, just redid their website, certainly some of that information to be put on their website as well.
Jeannie, we had talked earlier about Nextdoor, and certain complaints were coming up there about, concerns about not getting access to the library. Are you, can you use that as a vehicle for publicity?
I have access to the city of Palm Springs Nextdoor account. We try to limit what we do on there to make sure it's the most important information getting out with the city regarding that. So it, I don't want to turn it too much into an ad space. But, you know, we could definitely do some limited communication about the library cards, just about, like a one-time hit of go get stuff from the library. So, yeah, we could do that. I just have to be cautious because we don't want to bombard people. I know if you're on Nextdoor, you don't want to get an email every day from us.
Right. I think when you're doing the rollout for the pickup and access to the computers, that might be a way to get out to the community pretty quickly.
Definitely, that's a great idea.
And they have, just, they'll do a banner that you click on. I know they do it for COVID. You might have a banner to click on for the library in Nextdoor where you can always pick up information.
Yeah, we'll look into that. I've never seen that, so thank you. That's a good idea.
Yeah, maybe that's a question you could ask your other library directors, are they using Nextdoor and how?
Yeah, I'll check.
Okay, so, thank you, guys. Great discussion, I appreciate it. I think that we're on the right track. Let's get a real quick update on the Wellwood patio.
Well, surprisingly, there was a notice to proceed on the project. So it looks like if it's in fact true, work could begin in the month of May on the Wellwood patio, because that project was already approved and funded.
It would be good to see that be done.
Definitely, it would be nice to get it done. And now's a great time to do it when nobody else is around. They can work without having to be concerned about pedestrian traffic in the back of the library.
Building committee update.
Now, that one is on hold. We are not proceeding at this time with any of the work on that project. So that one truly is just an item that's stuck.
And can I just ask, the contact consultants, is that on hold?
Yes, it is. It was not ever initiated or finalized, so.
Initiated, doesn't sign.
Yeah, it was approved, but it has not been completely signed.
Sue actually reached out to me last week, and she said she understood because all their projects are on hold around the country. And she just wanted me to say to all of you that she hopes that they can come back and work with us in the future and not to give up, her words, not to give up on that building and a new library, that this community deserves it. So, you know, she did call up today to check on us and see how we're all doing. Okay, thank you for those reports. Any comments, future agenda items from trustees or staff? Okay, if so, I think our business is done for our first meeting using technology. I really miss you guys, I'd like to see you in person, hopefully someday soon. But I think we're on our way to making the library essential and finding some really great ideas, and I think this community will support that. So I wish all of you guys to be safe and be well, and you'll be hearing from me, for those of you as part of this. And maybe Jeannie can do a report after we have our meeting to tell you guys what's going on. And Jeannie, you'll send us the information that we can then help you talk to our city council member representative.
Correct.
Yes, definitely, I'll send you the information for what I have.
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't think it's a violation of the Brown Act if prior to Monday, each of us, if we have contacts from the city council, contact them. So if, maybe you can talk, you and David can talk to me about that since I talk frequently with some of the members.
Yeah, I definitely will. I'll reach out to you, and let's see what Jeannie's got, and then I'll be prepared to... I'm assuming this Monday meeting would allow us to make comments and?
Yes, all in comments, but also talking to people individually beforehand.
Yeah, and I want to write them as well, so.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. All right, everyone, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, guys, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. It is 7:09 PM.
All right, thank you, guys. See you soon.